Hello. Good evening, good morning.
Good morning, good morning. How are you?
Morning, how are you?
I'm well, thank you, and I hope you are.
Yes, very well. Good to see you here. Thanks for joining us.
It's my pleasure.
Good morning. I'm going to be having my camera off as you'll are recording if you don't mind.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I will come back around in a few minutes. Um, at what, in maybe twenty minutes?
Yes, about twenty minutes we will be about to start.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure of the connection. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. See you again.
See you then.
Hi, Saitanaya, good evening.
Good evening, DTM Nagesh. It's still eighth September, but as we discussed earlier, we are ready to celebrate three days earlier. Now Gabby's Toastmaster Club is turning three years on tenth of September. So are you all excited? Yay! I knew this because no one stopped me. So, I welcome all the members and guests and all the accredited speakers to the very first day of the celebration of Gabby's Toastmaster Club's three-year anniversary. Now, before the celebration begins, allow me to highlight very important key points. This meeting will be of two hours. Your camera should be on and audio should be off. Audio should be on whenever you are called to a need to speak. Toastmaster International allows us to speak on variety of topics, including topics of sex, religion, and politics. But we at Gabby's Toastmaster Club request everyone to be mindful and abstain from speaking on these topics. We urge you to not use any kind of sexist or racist undertones which may seem disrespectful or create hostility and discomfort for members and guests. Let me hand over the stage to our presiding officer of the day, distinguished Toastmaster Nancy Goel. She is a senior data analyst by profession and a certified image consultant and professional branding coach. She is the current vice president education of the Gabby's Toastmaster. Over to you, distinguished Toastmaster Nancy Goel.
Thank you so much, Toastmasters Saitanaya, for such a warm introduction there. Ladies and gentlemen, that was our sergeant Ed Ahn. Maybe have a huge round of applause for him just setting the right tone for the meeting. Thank you. Since its inception, the story of the Gabbys has always been mentioned as Big Bang Theory by various district officers around District ninety-two. After completing a term as a district officer myself, I can somehow relate to this. I'm sure a couple of you who have been there would know how difficult it is to charter a club. Where officers struggle to convince not one to five, twenty members to join Toastmasters. And after weeks of efforts, you still don't know whether the club is going to get chartered or not. The story of Gabbys was nothing like that, nothing close to that. It was entirely different. Somewhere in some other world, or rather I should say, a different WhatsApp group, completely oblivious to the worlds of Toastmasters. A group of image consultants, they were just there. And suddenly, somebody dropped a message about Toastmasters International Convention in twenty twenty. Everyone got excited and people started talking about it. All these image consultants felt that, okay, there's a need for them to be public speakers because that's somewhere related to their profession. And then another message came, which said, this is a paid membership. Although there were around thirty-five to forty people who were interested, now we had twenty-two image consultants who were still ready to go ahead with the membership of Toastmasters International. Within a day's time, these twenty-two people and one engineer from LinkedIn, he just, all these twenty-three people came on board, deposited the money, and suddenly, we were just looking for someone to help us in the chartering process. And that's how the Gabbys have it. On one hand, we were struggling to understand what does Toastmasters mean? Whether it's about roasting a toast or roasting a roast? Or what is Pathways Education Program? What is Base Camp? And what's not? We somehow survived. We not only survived. I think members sitting in this room, they are a witness to the fact that we thrived. From that day till today, we have become one of the top seven clubs in the entire world. We achieved two hundred and seventy-two educational awards with the current membership strength of eighty-one members. Twenty-seven pathbreakers, five distinguished Toastmasters, five present district officers and some past district officers, three district contest champions, several division and area level champions, seven district master mentor awardees, outstanding Toastmasters and spearhead Toastmaster awardees, and what not? Isn't this amazing? If I stop talking about club level, I think the list of awards is limitless. I don't want to take a lot of time of yours naming all those awards. You got my point. This makes me nothing less than proud of this club as a charter president as well as as current VP Education. I'm so proud of this club's members, their zeal, their energy, their passion, their grit to thrive. But what makes me more proud? Us celebrating our birthday celebrations with one of its kind initiatives in the entire District ninety-two. For those who have thought that Toastmasters was more about just coming together, speaking, and that's it, it was more of a hobby or maybe a time pass. We are going to learn how to thrive even further. What more does Toastmasters have, has to offer to us accredited speakers? We are celebrating our three-year celebration with three accredited speakers sitting with us in this room, joining from US and Bahrain. I welcome you to the Gabby's Toastmasters Club. Thank you so much. With this, I also acknowledge the presence of our esteemed guest who has, who have joined us today to attend this meeting, to be a part of our celebrations. I hope you get to learn, you get to thrive, get to enjoy every bit of this meeting. I would want each one of you to pay attention and thrive more. With this, I call this meeting to order. I would like to invite our area director for her address. She is a Toastmaster for more than four years, a little older in Toastmasters than our own club. She is a pathbreaker and she was the past president of TCS Mythric Bank of Toastmasters Club, which achieved president distinguished status and won multiple awards during her tenure. She is the current area director of Area B one, District ninety-two, and a proud member of the Gabby's Toastmasters Club. With this, I call upon stage Toastmaster Paduka Kanna.
I think she dropped for some reason now, Madam President.
Okay, in the meanwhile, Toastmaster Paduka joins this meeting. May I request our VPPR to come on stage and go ahead with our newsletter and a surprise launch. Our VPPR, distinguished Toastmaster Sarav Tata, is VPPR of both the Gabby's Clubs, the Gabby's Toastmasters Club and the Gabby's Online Toastmasters Club. He is a distinguished Toastmaster, rather double distinguished Toastmaster, one of the fastest distinguished Toastmasters in the entire District, District ninety-two. He has achieved two DTM Awards, three Triple Crown Awards, and he has completed nine parts by now and much more accolades. He has got us not as just a speaker but as a leader. With this, I call upon distinguished Toastmaster Sarav Tata on stage for the newsletter launch.
Thank you so much. Before I launch the newsletter, I've got a bigger announcement and a bigger launch that's coming our way. Ever since we started the Gabby's Toastmasters Club, there have been a couple of things that we wanted to do. But then we were so busy in speaking and learning and completing levels, doing parts, winning awards, doing contests, judging contests, officiating contests, and watching all those beautiful world champion of public speaking speeches over and over again that we didn't find time to do some of the basics. We didn't find time to fix some of the basics. Like for example, we did not have a bank account until say six months back. And apart from that, there was a couple of other things as well, very tactical, but then it matters, right? You always say we don't run a club. We run an INC. We run, you know, we call it the Gabby's INC. And that's how we run this club. Now, how can a corporation not have its own website? Right? And that's something that's going to shock everyone, that how can a corporation not have its own website? How can we who want to be professional speakers not have our own website? If you see all the accredited speakers that you see on screen today, each of them have their own beautiful website. And that's the first place that people go to look for you as a speaker. So the Gabbys, are we ready? Or are we ready to witness and launch our, our own website? W W W dot the Gabby's T M C dot com. Can all the Gabbys please unmute yourself as I share my screen and I am going to launch now. And this will tell you what I do most of my day. I am always on this particular page. Okay, so here I go. So this is the URL, the Gabby's T M C dot com. And here we go. This is the Gabby's website. So this is the homepage. We are one family, two clubs, as we keep on reiterating this over and over again. And then there's a lot of stuff that's been put in together here. These are some of the fun meetings that we do at the Gabbys because people say Gabby's is all about speaking and serious business, right? So just have a look at this photographs and you'll know that we do slay but in style, right? So that's what we do at the Gabbys. We speak with passion and we slay in style. Then we have got the leadership team. We have got the Gabby's Toastmaster Club Executive Committee, the Gabby's Online Toastmasters Club Executive Committee. This is our strength. We have got two hundred and seventy-two awards filed since we got chartered in September twenty twenty, right? And that is when we had only twenty-two members. Today we have got eighty-one members together, both the clubs put together. Humans of the Gabbys. And here you see one of our champion speakers, someone who fears the competitive. And do you see anything of that in her here? So that's the Gabbys. Here we see the humans of the Gabbys, a brief introduction of all of you, all the members. This is where you can go and find yourself. If you don't find yourself, please let us know, as you would understand that there are some fixes that we will still have to keep doing, right? Because we just launched the website, but then overall we did multiple checks. The XCOM has been working on this, burning the midnight oil. One of the most essential thing about the Gabbys is the friends and the fraternity support that we have. And here we have got credentials, you know, some of the testimonials for some of the guests who keep visiting our meetings and who love our meetings. And we have guests from across the fraternity, from various districts, from various countries as well. Some of the achievements that we are talking about in this particular tab, the distinguished Toastmasters of the Gabbys, we have got four distinguished Toastmasters, we have got five serving district, district officers. We have several past district officers as well, and the contest winners from district champions from various districts, District eighty, District ninety-eight, District ninety-two, they are all a part of the Gabby's family. And with this, I'm going to come to the launch of something again more exciting. But before that, these are the resources. These are the resources that I'm talking about. So we have, we have got the guest booklet here, where you can go and share this with your friends and family. If they ask you what the Gabbys is all about, the answer is right here. The meeting roles, you can download this from here. All the meeting role details, what the T mod is supposed to do, what the timer is supposed to do, what the R counter is supposed to do, everything is here. And that brings us to the newsletters. And with this, I have the pleasure of also launching Ubantu six point zero, the Gabby's newsletter that we are launching for this particular, okay, I am going to, uh, yeah, so let me present it from here. So this is our newsletter. This is our newsletter. And as you can see, one family, two clubs. So each, so just a quick glance to the contents of the newsletter. So we have named each of the sections by, in some, some foreign language for the very simple, different language, not all of these are foreign languages. And we have done it intentionally because we truly believe in Toastmasters International being international. Each of the paintings that you see here is by one of our club members, our Vice President Membership of the Gabby's Toastmasters Club, Toastmaster Dhwani Adesara. This is the editorial board who worked with me, Toastmaster Abigail Verkes, Toastmaster Manvee Kumar, Toastmaster Shilpa Eddy, and Toastmaster Dhwani Adesara, who helped me in putting this newsletter together. We have got, we have got the editor's letter followed by the division director's address, and the division director is a homegrown division director. For the second consecutive year, Gabby's is the home club of the division director. And then we have got, the division director is also incidentally a club president, so this is a presidential address as well of the Gabby's Toastmasters Club. And then the presidential address by the president of the Gabby's Online Toastmaster Club, Neha Jain, followed by the area director's address for both the area directors. Again, both of them are members of the Gabby's Toastmasters Club and the Gabby's Online Toastmasters Club. So all our area directors, all our division directors proudly call Gabby's their home. And then we have the two charismatic V P Es of the Gabbys sharing their thoughts, distinguished Toastmaster Nancy Goel and Toastmaster Kartik Venugopal. We have got many such paintings sprinkled all over the newsletter. This section talks about, about our section where we are talking about Toastmasters, we are talking about the clubs at a glance, the executive committee details, the awards, achievements. And then, you know, some of the Hall of Fame things that you have already seen on the website, but this is something that I really want to talk about. The mentorship experience, the district gives out the master mentor awards, and Gabby's proudly has always been the highest recipient of the master mentor award. We have got this year, seven out of the twelve master mentors of District ninety-two are from the Gabbys. And the multi-level mentorship program that we have at the Gabbys is the backbone of our success. These are some of the meeting posters. We are really proud of the posters that we create. And we are proud of the fact that we are one of the top seven clubs globally in twenty-two, twenty-three in terms of the number of education awards. We don't only add, we don't only bag the education awards, we also add members. Hence, we have, we have won the super club award twice in a row, having won all this medley, the talk-up and beat the clock, and the president's distinguished club status twice in a row ever since we got chartered. The next section talks about the members' articles. We have got amongst our members, we have got lawyers, we have got doctors, we have got, you know, corporate leaders. We have got teachers and each of them have contributed. We have got yoga gurus, each of them have contributed their piece into their thoughts, their experiences and their expertise. And then we have the section where we are taking the feedback and the testimonials of all our guests. So join us. One page we have dedicated to our very dear people who attend the Gabby's meetings would know Deena. Deena is not a member, but she is a regular in every single meeting that we have. Deena has a psychological, you know, challenge and she attends a meeting, she attends the, she attempts the table topics through chat, and that's how she has been associated with us. She is very forthcoming and she has been very open with us about the challenges that she faces and how much she still loves to be in Toastmasters and chooses Gabby's as one of the clubs she loves to visit. And then we asked Chat G P T, what are the guests telling about us? And it did a very quick summary of the adjectives that they're using about us and it actually blew us over. We feel humbled. Finally, the new members, their thoughts about the Gabbys, why they joined the Gabbys, and two beautiful pieces by two overseas Toastmasters of the Gabbys, Toastmaster Sudarma Perera and Toastmaster Gihan Vikram Singh from Sri Lanka, followed by one section dedicated to the roots of the Gabbys. Idhunimage, Namma Bangalore, Idhunimage. And this is what this section is all about. It's all about you Bangalore. This is for you. All these pictures have been clicked by our club member, Toastmaster Ithvikraj. So that's it. That's the newsletter. Please do go through it. I will be sharing this with you over the WhatsApp group and through other channels. Please visit our website and keep rocking. Thank you. Over to you, Madam Toastmaster.
How did you like the surprise Gabby and our guests? The chat is already open. Please feel free to visit the website, to download the newsletter, go through it, read everything. And the entire team has worked a lot in both the things. And kudos to our VPPR for putting it all together, bringing it to us in today's meeting. In the absence of our area director, since she is not able to join back, I would like to call upon our next guest, not guest, member. He's a teacher, trainer, coach in the domain of construction. He's trained over seventy-five-hundred-plus professionals in the last decade. With his coaching, he has impacted over five-hundred-plus professionals' lives. In addition, with his experience over three decades, he's a consultant who checks the health of occupied buildings. Did you guess who this person is? Not yet. Yes, yes, I can see all of you nodding. He is none other than our club president, our division director, Division B Director, District ninety-two, distinguished Toastmaster Nagesh Ramapurthi. DTM Nagesh, over to you.
Thank you so much, DTM Nancy Goel. Good evening, good afternoon, and good morning, Toastmasters. I have always admired films as beautiful arts by artists and their contribution. A deeper analysis reveals the reason for finely woven tapestry. That's the movie. What we see in a club meeting is a final performance. Willing people give many hours to ensure that each meeting is a success for their efforts and leadership. Productive meeting doesn't just happen. I often get this response from new Toastmasters about their expectations from club meetings. Something that's meaningful to me. Every Toastmaster has the right to expect this from attending club meetings. And I wonder, have we succeeded in this endeavor? Toastmasters, high-quality meetings and meaningful meetings are not accidents. They come from a structured program of new member orientation, excellent club programs, and strong emphasis on sharing. These three areas of work by the club here has kept senior members very involved while they provide directions and focus to its members. Toastmaster Club meetings offer numerous opportunities for training within the club and outside the club. And I'm glad that the practice at the Gabbys, the meetings are now going beyond the club. People are going on stage outside the clubs and gathering accolades for themselves. I want to leave you with three, my top three quotes from Ralph C. Smithly. Criticism is one of the finest things, perhaps very finest things. And in Toastmasters, yet it is the weakest spot in most of the clubs. And we are strengthening that at Gabby's. Second, our past prepares us to meet the challenges of the future. Thirdly, if you want to make your speeches attractive, impressive, and easily remembered, illuminate them with good illustrations. At Gabby's, we wish to assist you in moving in the right direction. Our club is a great place to start networking and find your way up. Thank you so much. Back to you, Madam Toastmaster.
Thank you. Thank you so much, DTM Nagesh, for such a beautiful address and for inspiring us on this. It's time to start with our meeting. To begin with the meeting, rather I should say, to take the meeting further, I would like to call upon the Toastmaster of the day. The Toastmaster of the day today is someone who joined us very recently. A bi- biotechnologist turned into psychology enthusiast who is currently pursuing P G D in training and development from I S T D. I would say I'm a proud mentor of my mentee, Toastmaster Manvee Kumar. Please welcome with a huge round of applause, Toastmaster Manvee on the stage.
Thank you so much, distinguished Toastmaster Nancy. Good evening, fellow Toastmasters and my dear guests. Welcome to the first day of third-year anniversary celebration of the Gabby's Toastmasters. You already got a snippet of how Gabby's got chartered. I'll share something that maybe the president missed or gave a chance to me to share about it. You know what? Toastmasters International was formed on October twenty twenty, October twenty-second in nineteen twenty-four. In California, the founder, Dr. Ralph C. Smithly, started the very first club to help its, the people under him improve their communication skills. Wondering why I am sharing all this? Fast forward twenty twenty. In a group of image consultants, a message popped in that said, let's join Toastmasters. As you all know, as image consultants, it is very important to have a proficient communication skill. And the group had a good participation. In the same group, someone said, instead of joining a club, why not? Let's make our own club. And as soon as the message got delivered, there were many participants who started volunteering. I'm interested. I want to join. Me, count me in. And a new group was formed. A group of people who were not aware of what Toastmasters is. Who were not aware of how it works, what it provides. But they, what they knew is that they have the enthusiasm and they have the courage to start a new club. They want to be good. They want to be better in their communication skills. And that is when they took the challenge. They started researching. Now the question came, what should be the name? We are chartering, we got all the information, but what should be the name of the club? We got many suggestions. Some were good, some were not. Few names were selected and you know what? The name that got maximum of votes was shared by Netra, a member of that group only. The gift of gab. Gabby's was the name and the meaning of Gabby's is very talkative. That is how our club, the Gabby's, came into the world of Toastmasters International. On eleventh September twenty twenty. Want to know more about it? Let me share, but before that, I'll introduce someone. Who will be noting the time of the meeting, who will be helping us with the timing in the. She is, the timer role is performed by Toastmaster Chitrapshi today. Toastmaster Chitrapshi is serving as the secretary of the club. And is a double path breaker in just eight months of her Toastmasters journey. For everyone's understanding, I request Toastmaster Chitrapshi to please share the timer cards as I share the names. And I share the timings of the. Toastmaster Chitrapshi, are you ready?
Yes.
So for panel discussion, the green card will be shown at twenty minutes. The yellow card will be displayed at thirty minutes. And the red card will be displayed at forty minutes. Now you know who's the timer and what the cards are. So I'll not keep you waiting and we directly move to the session that we all joined for. The panel discussion with our esteemed accredited speakers. And to moderate this panel discussion, we have distinguished Toastmaster Nagish as the panel moderator. He is the founder and managing director of concert, of construction management consulting firm. With over thirty five plus years of experience in project management. In Toastmasters, he is the president of the Gabby's Toastmasters. And also the division director of Division B District ninety two. Distinguished Toastmaster Nagish, the stage is all yours.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Once again, welcome to the Gabby's. Good evening, good afternoon and good morning to all of you. I'm honored to serve as a moderator for this remarkable event. Where we have the privilege of hosting a panel of accredited speakers in Toastmasters. All of whom are renowned in the field of public speaking. This evening promises to be both enlightening and inspiring as we explore into the journeys. Experiences and wisdom of these accomplished individuals. Our panelists distinguished for their remarkable journeys are poised to share insights. That can shape your own path towards becoming an accredited speaker. In next about thirty minutes, we will explore secrets to the path and the possibilities. The challenges faced, the lessons learned and maybe a few strategies employed. By these accredited speakers on their paths through their accreditations. Toastmasters, please place your questions in the chat. As the chat is open, we will try to answer them in the time window we have or. We'll get those answered by our panelists offline and we'll get back to you. Now, our first panelist, D T M Valda Ford. Is an internationally lone expert on women's health, leadership and cultural compet- competency. And has educated audiences in over forty countries. As a C E O of Center for Human Diversity, she is dedicated. To improving communication across diverse groups of Fortune five hundred companies. Tribal chiefs, Afghan teachers, Buddhist monks, healthcare professionals and law enforcers. Welcome to the dis- this discussion, D T M Valda Ford.
Hello and thank you so much for allowing me to be a part of this fabulous celebration.
So much. Our second panelist, D T M Mohammed calls himself a live speaker. Through his company, Y Access Training Solution, he brings speaking to your life. And gives life to your speaking. He's the first from Middle East to reach the W C P S finals. That was in two thousand six and is the first and only accredited speaker from Middle East. He is helping organizations and individual build their communication, positive culture. And innovative performances in industrial sector as they manage their occupational safety and health programs. Welcome to the discussion, D T M Mohammed.
Thank you very much. I'd like, I am very happy to be here with you. I won't be as risky because I am in occupation and health and safety, but I like to go beyond safety. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our third panelist, D T M Rochelle Rice. Holds both the Accredited Speaker designation from Toastmasters International. And Certified Speaking Professional designation from National Speakers Association. She has been a member of Toastmasters since twenty two years in District forty six. And more recently has joined a club in Kiev. She proudly served as Accredited Speaker Co-Council Chair from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty three. She blends her speaking expertise with her somatic training to help people become more confident in their leadership roles. I welcome to you the, uh, to this discussion, D T M Rochelle.
Thank you very much. Greetings from New York City, fellow Toastmasters.
Thank you. Now let's begin the paths and possibilities discussion. To begin with, I would like D T M Valda. To answer this. What should motivate someone to pursue the path of becoming an accredited speaker?
Thank you for the question and my belief is that to become an accredited speaker. Allows people around you and especially those in the Toastmasters and speaker communities to understand. That you have done the work, you have been recognized by your peers and you are someone who can rock the stage.
Thank you. Now I pass on the same question to D T M Mohammed.
This is how I look at it, you know, uh, remember this is, this is three years of initiating the Gabby's. Everyone joined and founded the club. They did this for a reason, for themselves and others. This is how I look at the narrative of accredited speaker. We stay in Toastmasters, we do well, we get accolades and. By time, we find it really comfortable, joyful, you know, uh, pen over pen, you know. Ribbon over ribbon and then someone comes and reminds us, hello. Uh, do you remember the reason you joined Toastmasters? Yeah, I want to become a good speaker outside. Yeah, you ain't doing it outside. Have you noticed? All right? And so this is a opportunity from Toastmasters International to tell you, okay, remember why you joined in the first place. Go out and serve the world with your voice, with your expertise, with the power that you have. We can't think of a better advertisement for Toastmasters than accredited speaker. In the speaking line, at least, back to you.
Thank you. Thank you for that insight about somebody knocking us and saying, go out of Toastmasters and advertise about it. And advertise yourself and your speaking skills. Thank you so much. Now what's your thoughts on it, uh, D T M Rochelle?
Thank you. I will agree first with both of my colleagues, but also mention that. In Toastmasters, there is a lot of focus on the world champion of public speaking, which is you competing with Toastmasters around the world. When you decide to go for the accredited speaker, the motivation comes from within. It's what Mohammed was talking about and Valda talking about the motivation about who you are as an individual. And what I found most exciting and what drives me when it came to the motivation of this was that it was a competition for myself. I had to bring my very best to the Toastmasters world. Because it involves not only submitting a lot of paperwork and video presentations. But also a live presentation where you are standing up. Delivering to the Toastmasters International, to the world that you are indeed one who deserves to earn this accredited speaker designation.
Thank you so much. Thank you for mentioning about the requirements to become an accredited speaker. I'll touch base upon that a little more in some time. Uh, however, what comes into my mind as of now is there are not many Toastmasters. Who have taken public speaking as their profession. There are people from different professions in Toastmasters. Now, what should be their preparation? If they have to aim and attain Accredited Speaker designation? Let's start with the D T M Valda.
My belief is that you should go into this. Quest for the designation based on your love of being a person who can qualify as a professional speaker. Not just seek the designation so that you can have another check mark on what you've done. I love speaking. I've been that person who has always wanted to find my place where I am understood. The profession of speaking is not an easy one, but it is very rewarding. And my goal is to always use my words to uplift the world, to uplift the people who are listening. To give them the education, the knowledge, the information or the joy that they are seeking. And I believe that those of us who are in it now do it because we love it. And we have a passion for it. And my hope is always that the people who seek this want to do it. Not just for the designation because they know they have something to bring. And they want to do it in the best possible way and be recognized by their peers.
Thank you so much for those thoughts. Actually, your thoughts reminded me of one of my mentoring, mentor telling me. For D T M, don't check the box. Serve the Toastmasters. And you will achieve it for the love of what you are doing. You reminded me of that. Thank you so much. Now, we'll, we'll move to D T M Mohammed. What's your take for those who are not in public speaking profession?
Well, I remember two years back, virtually, I did a similar program about accredited speakers, et cetera. And, um, it was called the Kerala D T M Guilds, all right? I mean, almost, um, three quarters through the program, a doctor, D T M doctor. Um, uh, uh, you know, unmuted and said, I am a doctor. I'm thirty years in Toastmasters, something that, no, experienced. I've been long in Toastmasters and I don't have anything to talk about. And you know, I did my thing with him and I led him first, led him in a tricky way to talk about a surgery that was successful. And when he spoke there, it was so inspiring. I said, there you go. You have one, one thing to talk about, right? So what I'm, when I, when we say professional speaker, uh, speaking, this is my definition. Professional speaking is speaking about your profession. Because this is what accredited speaker taught me. For, for a long time, I thought professional speaker can speak about anything. Well, of course he can. If he masters the word. But unless and until you speak about your core proficiency. You will be far less effective. So, and by definition, every professional can be a speaker. In that regard, accredited speaker will give you a lot of help in that regard.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I, I, if I combine what Valda said. Share your experiences, share your passion, share your love, give, go out and give what the world wants from in your profession. I think that's what is coming out of what you said. Now let's move to our third panelist and hear her thoughts on, on this.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I would agree that I became a speaker through my industry. I was speaking as a fitness trainer with a specialty at Fitness Industries before I even knew. That professional speaking was even in occupation, so to speak. So I was speaking long before I met Toast, I was already in Toastmasters, but long before I'd even become a member of the National Speakers Association. So yes, to Mohammed's point that you are speaking about your industry, you are speaking professionally. Now I understand this club was founded on with a number of image consultants. And I imagine that their work is done with groups of people at times. That would absolutely qualify them to move in the direction of an accredited speaker designation. I would say, I would invite people to move at this with a sense of fun and curiosity, but a high level of professionalism as well. Because to me, there is, we have over close to three hundred thousand members in Toastmasters International. Now perhaps not all will be ready for this designation. But the fact that we are moving it more into the awareness of all Toastmasters worldwide, we hope to see many, many more people apply for the designation.
Yes. Trust me, after this panel discussion, there'll be a lot of people applying for it. Ha- having heard three of you where you say, talk about your profession, show your proficiency. Um, talking about three hundred thousand Toastmasters. Uh, and a lot of people, uh, applying for it or not applying for it. I want to ask you, uh, we have to pass through several stage gates. There are several levels to pass before. Uh, you even get that background that you three of you have, uh. What's your preparation? How difficult is it for somebody who is starting, say today, after this panel discussion? I'll start with Rochelle this time.
The, thank you. The most important thing is to download and look at the Accredited Speaker Handbook. So that the, you can line yourself up with what's required for this. Now, the preparation, I think mentally and emotionally is to just commit to doing it. Just say, yes, I am this person and get yourself lined up and organized. Because to me, it's, it's, it's structured. Just Toastmasters is incredibly well structured. And this program is all laid out in the Accredited Speaker Handbook. Just follow it. And if you're not ready, just line yourself up and get ready to do it.
Hmm. So there is a structure in place which talks about so much of guidelines that will guide you. Get there. Um, what, what has been your preparation, D T M Mohammed? Uh, how difficult or easy? How long did it take for you to get there?
It looks difficult, but with people like Valda, uh, my colleagues Valda and Rochelle. Trust me, uh, they carried me with their hearts, their hands because I came later. You have no idea the community of accredited speaker, how much they actually want you to, to, to be there. I don't know what champ, world champions do. They do help give feedback. But in this fraternity, our accredited speaker, there's a great amount of help. We, and because it's not a competition, we actually, we want more accredited speakers. It's good for us for Toastmasters, but I want to say one thing, you know? I remember when I was in safety department, I was just a safety coordinator and that was line one management. I badly wanted line two management, which I mentioned in my accredited speaker, I think. And the next line was superintendent. In order to become a superintendent, you have to become first acting superintendent. The manager has to put you on, you know, uh, temporary base, acting superintendent. And one day he delved in my office and said, Mohammed, for how long you are not a superintendent? I said, for as long as I remember. He said, okay, since next month, since tomorrow, you are an acting superintendent. Guess what happened in twenty four hours? Guess what happened in twenty-four hours? When I came into the department, I really acted like a superintendent. The way I walk, the way I speak, the way I write my reports and the way I go into the departments patrolling. I wasn't even an acting superintendent yet, but the name. Because I put myself in that space, everything in my mindset changed. That's what will happen when you go download the guidebook and apply. Start, just to start, because General Adin Rumi says, the road will show once you take the first step. Otherwise, it won't appear. Back to you.
So true. I, I have heard a lot of people say, there's a difference between how you walk with your slippers on and the way you walk when your shoes are on. You walk confidently. When you're on, get into the robe and you'll start thinking is what you say. Thank you so much. Let's move to DTM Valda, your thoughts please on the preparation.
The preparation is one for me. I tell people all the time that I'm an accidental professional speaker. In that, I had no intention of being known as a speaker. My goal was to be recognized as an expert in my field. And because of that, I took a lot of time to speak at any opportunity, any venue that would allow me to talk about health, public health, women's health. And over time, someone said to me, well, what do you charge? Really? You want to pay me? There've been people who telling me to shut up and sit in the corner for a long time. So the idea that someone would pay me for what I love to do was very exciting. So my path started with me talking about what I loved, with me making sure that I became more expert, not sitting, not resting on my laurels. And then to make sure, as my colleagues have said, I paid attention to the requirements. Even though I was already a member of the National Speakers Association, even though Toastmasters came later, I understood that I had to go point by point by point. And I reached out to those who were already accredited speakers who said, here is what you need to do in order to get through the process. And that is what it's about, letting go of your ego, understanding that we want to help you and that if you allow us to, we can make the process better and easier.
So nice. Darren often says, he has taught me kind of, don't refuse any stage time, otherwise I'll stop mentoring you. I, I have passed this on to a lot of my mentees as well. So, so true that you slowly steadily keep going forward and it helps you in your preparation. Thank you so much Rochelle for putting that handbook in the chat. I'm sure it will be of use to a lot of people. Now, actually, in this discussion, Mohammed touched an important point. There are a lot of people here to help you out. We need more accredited speakers. It's not a competition. Golden words. I was about to ask that, how does the mentoring work? It is a cornerstone in Toastmasters, I know that. But in specifically to this particular program, how does it work for people who are just looking to jump into this? We start with DTM Valda.
You know, I've had people approach it many different ways. And unfortunately, a lot of people will wait until a month before the application is due to think, oh, please help me make sure that's the worst possible thing, because you will invariably make a mistake and have to wait another year to go through the process. The mentoring can take place with something as simple as you looking on the accredited speaker list and you determine who there has said they're happy to mentor and sending an email, a text, whatever it takes to get to them. And from there, I work with the person to say, what is it that you need from me? Some people are very, very experienced as speakers and maybe have already been paid to speak, but don't know how to do it the way it is required for the designation. For instance, a young man the other day said, I'm already, I have my video, I have everything done. And his video was not the format that was required. It was beautiful, it was professional, but it would not pass muster. So importantly, determine what you need from us. I have worked with some people from the beginning, two years before they wanted to apply and worked with them every step of the way to say, this is what you need to do. This is how you find paid speaking engagements. And please allow me and several others to give you feedback. So you will get a, a really broad array of people's opinions and not just mine.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much. That, that was really great insight. Anything to add to that, DTM Mohammed, on the process of?
I really wanted to pass this question. I wanted to pass this question because my colleagues are far more experienced in this regard. And the help is immense, but I only, I focus on helping anyone about the topic, because that was the turning point. In my five years quest, okay, three years were about the video length, video quality and Denver was the visa. But then the turning point was that I wasn't focusing on the core profession. So that's why later lately, a Saudi young Toastmaster showed me a video which was rejected and it was so good. And I told him, it's not your profession, it's your passion. You're speaking about something you're passionate about. Tell me what's your profession? He told me, it's totally one eighty degrees apart. I said, focus on your profession and your passion will be ten times more than what you're watching now. So I focused and by the way, I learned this through then accredited speaker mentors and now fellow accredited speakers. They were the persons who brought my attention to it. Back to you.
Thank you. I, I now move to DTM Rochelle on this mentoring support system available in Toastmasters. Can you throw some light on us and give us insights?
Yes, we just had three women who received the Accredited Speaker Designation. And one of them, I will say, I jumped on a call with her because it led to Valda's point, it was getting a little close. And I said to her, you only want to do this once. You only want to do this once if you can. So this mentoring is, is the most important part of this whole thing. And I will say to Mohammed and Valda, theirs were so good that I still remember them today and the day that each of them received their Accredited Speaker Designation. So what I say if someone first reaches out to me is make sure you have read through the entire Accredited Speaker Handbook first. Because personally, I think this is your responsibility to take this on and read through the requirements and then I'm happy to mentor on. But again, to my colleague's point, it is highly, highly recommended that you reach out to one of us, two of us, three of us to make sure that you get the right mentoring in the right direction so that you only do it once.
Last time, right?
May I add one more little piece?
Sure, please.
I would also highly recommend that you, while you pursue this path, become very skilled and proficient at both live and virtual and hybrid. And the reason is what we're seeing is with the changes in our, in our rapidly changing world, we don't know what could happen when it comes time to possibly present live, that you may end up having to stay home in your country for whatever reason to deliver. So you want to be sure that while you're pursuing this designation, you are able to do all three, a live, a virtual and a hybrid situation, so that you are prepared no matter what the world puts your way the day that this comes.
Wonderful. That's worth the gold of words from you that be prepared for all the three formats, offline, online and hybrid. Thank you so much there. I heard Mohammed talking about five years, that's still ringing in my ears. Now, now, what is that skill that a person should have? Yes, of course, he has to be from the profession, talking about the profession, that's what I heard. But what more that we need to know about have to get there? Starting from Valda?
Okay, well, the, the one thing I want to say is that many people get prepared, thinking that they have to have the skills of a world champion. Totally different. World champions, some have really struggled to get the Accredited Speaker Designation because it is more than being able to speak beautifully, fluidly, use great stage presence, vocal variety for seven minutes. This is demonstrating that you sometime other than on the stage can go into a group and help them get something they need. Whether it is learning how to be a financial planner, whether it is learning how to do magic, CPR, whatever the case might be. And so many of the ones I have counseled and who did not get through were insistent on being perfect in their seven minutes. But this is about being able to speak from twenty to sixty minutes well, giving a workshop style presentation. And while they had all of those tricks, they did not show any depth of knowledge. They showed smoothness and eloquence, but no depth, depth and no understanding that when I walk away from this, I'll have more than just feeling good. I may have the beginnings of a skill. And the people in the audience who are determining if you will be an accredited speaker are looking to see, do you have something that makes me feel like I got something? That makes me feel like I would refer you to someone else to pay you to speak? Not just to razzle dazzle, make us cry, make us smile. No. Do we have knowledge, skill and depth? And it can be that you are a motivational speaker, but you are doing it in such a way that you could teach it, not just do it.
That's so nice to hear that. Now it's late here, you need to teach, not just do it. I'll come back to Rochelle on this again. Are there any more skill that somebody needs to have to what Valda said? Teach, not just show.
But I think the most important thing that Valda mentioned was the depth of knowledge, that you are an expert in your area of speaking. So Mohammed, Valda has the nursing and I know she has a lot of things that come underneath that. I know Mohammed is in safety, like I want to be able to recall that very quickly. I'm in wellness, embodied leadership, that we are able to call upon one another. So it's a level of expertise. Now I know you asked me what skills. Again, I would say that this is not the same as world champion, not at all. You need to be super comfortable in moving on stage, delivering your area of expertise. So when you do this for the accredited speaker, you're not speaking to Toastmasters. I mean, you are, but you're addressing your audience that you would speak to in your career. So again, going back to the image consultants, they would be speaking perhaps to a group of people who are interested in knowing more about image and how to fix their image or improve their image. So taking a speech like that and getting it videoed for an application would be highly acceptable because you are showing your area of expertise and not one who does generalization of all, or as, as someone said earlier, not someone who just razzle dazzles.
Got that, got that. You, you nicely put it across to the audience about image consulting. Now I'm sure many of us understand that's where we started from. Show the proficiency of your profession, show the depth. Thank you so much. Now, let's look at, if we have any questions. Ah, I think Aparna has got a question here. What are the key skills to be an accredited speaker that are different from one that AW CPS requires? I think most of it is answered, but still in case something you need to add, any one of you.
Yeah, I would say definitely if you're a person who, when you were giving a presentation, you would use slides, you would use props, you would do all of that, have a comfort with it. Look like it's second nature to you, not fumbling with, oh, how do I use the pointer, the clicker? Oh, it's delayed, because I can tell you, if you're on the stage, many times your technology is not the same as in you, when you're with a small room. For instance, I used some slides and the slides came ten seconds after I wanted them. So I had to have the ability to understand what I wanted to say, even though the slide wasn't there. While I wasn't sitting thinking, well, you know, next slide please, next slide please. It's, you have to look like with or without slides, no matter what the conditions are, you can do what you say you do. So if your slides fail, if the lights go out, if whatever happens, I want to feel like when I'm sitting in that audience, you could tell me anyway. You could tell me in the dark with no props and no anything except that you know it. You make me feel like you know it and you make me feel like you want to know more.
I think that's part of the proficiency, that no matter what the situation is, you still give what you need to give. Thank you for emphasizing on that.
Let me add one more thing. If you're a person who typically speaks for an hour and most trainings are usually in the forty-five minutes to an hour range, you will not be given an hour to speak on the stage. So your important thing you need to know, if you get past level one and go to level two, is to have something ready that's about a TEDx length, about eighteen minutes, fifteen to eighteen minutes. And sometimes the difficulty can be, how do I cut out what I need to cut out for time and still look like I know what I know? Because we love to own our words and you have to let them go. Just cut, 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 cut and get people to say, okay, I still understand you, even though it's eighteen minutes and not sixty minutes.
Got that, got that. We have a raised hand from our DTM Sorodatta. If you can unmute yourself and quickly ask a question.
Okay, I have got a bunch of questions, but I will not ask all the questions. But I, I just want to add it. These three questions, if we have the permission, can I ask?
Can you combine the three and ask one question? We are already on yellow time.
Okay, so the first question is that I know that within Toastmasters, we can't charge, right? Professionally for any of the sessions that we do. Even for, even if we have a speakers bureau, we still can't charge. There is a restriction of that. I believe just the confirmation that it's not applicable for accredited speakers, right? I mean, this is a profession, so you can charge a remuneration for all the assignments that you do. That's one. Second is a clarification from DTM Mohammed Sukri, that you said that, you know, there is no competition, more accredited speakers are welcome. I understand for, for Middle East, maybe this is true because you're the only accredited speaker. But what, what if there is a competitive market, like say US has got so many accredited speakers? So would you still say the same for, for US, like more AS is good? Or is it going to only increase your competition? So basically, like, how does it come across to you? So yeah, I think these are the two main questions that I have.
DTM Mohammed, do you want to take that?
The question is exactly not for me, it's for the US, correct?
Okay, so I want the two ladies from, yes, DTM Rochelle, for you.
I'm so excited to answer this one because one of our greatest joys going forward is to make sure that internationally, people are very aware of the Accredited Speaker Program. Up until now, it's been pretty much in the United States and we are finally, finally getting out by opportunities like this on Zoom to be able to bring the Accredited Speaker Designation to places around the world and say, all are welcome. This is not a competition, as Valda mentioned, this is a real encouragement to bring more people in. We are only ninety-three in the world, that's it. And it's a very small percentage of women. So we're looking for both women colleagues and accredited speaker colleagues of all to join us. In fact, I think that's probably my greatest mission is to make sure that this Accredited Speaker Designation has the brand awareness around the world as much as the world championship of public speaking.
And if I can add to that, the, the whole issue of the payment, you are, you are being paid by people who are not Toastmasters. You can specifically go to folks and say, I have the skill. For instance, I speak for the American Heart Association because I like to talk about women's health and their hearts. So the most important thing that I do is let them know that I'm available, know what my fee, they can find it if they look at online. But those are the ones we're looking for. You must get the Accredited Speakers speak before twenty-five groups that are not Toastmasters. With at least twenty people in the audience and fifteen of them should give you a fee.
Got that.
Can I, can I also add one thing?
Please.
Inherently, the accredited speakers by design will make you distinguished in your line of proficiency. Because guess what? After I'm done in twenty twenty and got my accredited speaker, I go back to the safety industry. Trust me, in my very line of building safety culture industry. Not all the safety management, safety culture, which I'm, uh, expert in. How many people speak? I'm telling you, one in a million. But if you compare yourself to the bigger, uh, bowel, then the, the ocean is red, you're right. But if you go, that, that ser- surgeon from Kerala, if he goes back to his area, there's no, no one other than him. Who went through this and can speak about this. Actually, accredited speaker by design makes you distinguished without having to compete.
Okay, we have, uh, I think we have time for just one question. Amit, you have raised your hand if you can ask quickly.
Yeah, I, you know, for the lack of time, I thought I'd just, uh, put my question also in the chat box. So my question is, uh, basically, you know, uh, for a person who is a budding Toastmasters, just joined. What will be the step-by-step approach, uh, to become an accredited speaker as per you?
Yeah, the first thing is just to make sure you know what it is that you're talking about. That you refine that to the point that you are demonstrated as an expert. And then you speak, you use that same speech in your Toastmasters Clubs to get feedback, to get refinement, to get it better, to get it smoother. And then you approach people who may pay you. So that you'll have the ability to show that you had those fifteen paid engagements, but just keep working at it because. You will demonstrate your expertise and as Mohammed says, once you're out there, other people will want you to speak to them about your topic. So that you are better, better, better. And when you get on that stage, you'll just take it over.
Thank you, Valda.
Thank you. Thank you for those clarifications. Uh, Chitragshi, Toastmasters Chitragshi, you had a question. Can you put it on the chat? We'll get the answers from the panelists after, uh, the session is over. Uh, before, uh, we try to wrap this up, I thought, uh, we look at what was emphasized today. Uh, start with your profession, show the depth of your proficiency, go through the handbook which has got the. Step-by-step procedure requirements on the stage gates, the levels. Um, the number of speeches you need to do, number of paid ones, the video requirements and things like that. And also, um, mentoring is available. Decide and start is what DTM Mohammed Sukri said. So there is a lot of support available for those who wants to become an accredited speaker. It's not a competition, more AS is the merrier is what I also heard. And, um, uh, show the depth in whatever knowledge that you share is the key out, uh, out here. And, uh, there's a lot of encouragement available in Toastmasters to become accredited speaker. With that, I would say we are eighty-one in Gabys. Definitely, there might be eighty-one applications coming this cycle. With that, thank you so much, uh, panelists. It was, uh, very wonderful, uh, to have, uh, listened to you. I would say, uh, we are quite fortunate that we have had opportunity to learn from, uh, all of you so accomplished individuals. And we hope that the wisdom and the advice that you have given us will make our journeys, uh, better. We'll become more confident and more effective communicator in the work that we do as a profession. And let's remember that path to become an accredited speaker is not just about earning the title. It's about the love that you show for your profession, the growth, the impact that you can make to your community. And the lasting contributions that you can make to the people through the power of the words that you have. Thank you for joining us tonight and your day. Um, may our Toastmasters journey be filled with learning, growth. And lots of inspirations. Um, thank you so much, panelists. Now I hand over the stage back to our TMOD Toastmaster, Manvi. Before that, please give a big round of applause to my panelists.
Thank you all. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you so much to Singhus Toastmaster Nagish and to all the esteemed panelists in the meeting today. The insights you shared will surely help all of us and as Singhus Toastmaster Nagish said. We are eighty-one and we will hope that all the eighty-one participants will be there in the, uh. Will be filing it for the accredited speakers. Now, moving, before moving forward, I have an announcement to make. You all witnessed the very first day of celebration that too with these esteemed panelists who shared. Their journey insights and helped us about this specific topic. Tomorrow, we have an educational session that will be conducted by Colonel Shabi. It is on communication is the survival skill. And that I believe will surely help all of us. So I'll invite every single individual who is present here. To please be there and is help us and get help from the trainer. Now, moving forward, do you want to know what all the eighty-one people who are in the Gabys feel about the club? Do you want to know what exactly they describe Gabys as? But for that, I believe you have to wait for some time because now we'll be moving forward to the table topic session. And we not only have one table topic session, but two today as we are celebrating our third day anniversary. So I'll call up on stage the very first table topic master. Who is Toastmaster June Joseph? Toastmaster June is a content writer and a passionate reader. She's an introvert who finds joy in conversations. Please help me welcome with a huge round of applause, Toastmaster June Joseph on stage to conduct that first table topic session. The stage is all yours.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. What a powerful session we had today. I felt like the session should not have ended. But in Toastmasters, we believe in the agenda and time. And now according to the agenda, it's time for table topic session one. So I thought to myself, what should I bring for this anniversary celebration tonight to all of you? There are a lot of guests in the group tonight. We have forty-one people live right now. Some of you know what is table topics, but there are many who don't. So I thought, let's go with the traditional Toastmaster style table topics, right? Now, what is table topics? Table topics is very simple. It's impromptu speaking, my dear friends. You're given a topic on the spot. It can be a word, a phrase, a situation, a dilemma, anything. And all you have to do is speak. In Toastmasters, we don't judge. We don't think, oh, that, did that make any sense? Doesn't matter. Just speak from your heart. But speak for how long? That's the most important question. In table topics, you speak for minimum one minute and maximum two minutes. We have a lovely timer today, Chitragshi Waj, who will be helping me to conduct this session. When the one-minute mark, that is the minimum time that you have to speak comes up. Chitragshi will show you a green card. Chitragshi, can I please request you? Oh, lovely, she's already there. You can see that leprechaun kind of a thing, that's a green card. So that is the minimum time you have to try to speak to. Then at one minute thirty seconds, you will be shown a yellow card, like magic. See, there it is. And at two minutes, you will be shown a red card. Now, once the red card is there, you know, that's it, wrap up. You have a thirty-second grace period to wrap up your speech. But we won't tell you when that thirty seconds end. That's all up to you. I hope the timing details are very clear. Now, a little bit twist, though it's a traditional table topic session. I thought we should bring some choice. It's third anniversary for Gabys. So some gift, some choice for all my dear Toastmasters and guests here. And the choice is very simple. I'll call you up on the virtual stage and you have a simple choice. Do you want an easy topic? Do you want something with a medium intensity? Or are you daring tonight to go for something really difficult and interesting? The choice is yours. Who wants to come first on the virtual stage? I would prefer a Toastmaster so that they can display and show how it is done. Oh, I already have a lot of hands up. Anybody? Amit, I see Amit, I mean, I see Devashis. Okay, Amit, we'll go with you tonight. You are the first person, the first table topic speaker. Can you see the timer, Amit?
Um, no, just a second. I'll have to change the viewer, I think.
Yes, please go to the speakers room and you'll see the timer.
I have.
Is the timer visible? All right, Amit, third anniversary, first table topic session. Are you ready? What is the intensity? Simple? Nah, something a little difficult? Or do you want to challenge yourself tonight?
I think I'll go with the medium intensity.
Medium intensity. Amit wants to play it scene. All right, Amit. Here's your topic. Can people who disagree on politics be happily married? Can people who disagree on politics be happily married? Amit.
First of all, uh, thank you, Joanne, for inviting me for the table topics, uh, session. Uh, I think the topic is very pertinent. Uh, you know, can people who have, uh, who can be politically. Uh, disagreement or you said can be happily married. Um, I think, uh, you know, these are two different, uh, you know, genres of life, I would say. Political affiliations, affiliations or ideologies are very different from being, uh, you know, married. I remember, I think, you know, a couple of years back, an instance where there was a couple. Who was from two different political parties, which were opponents in an election as well. So one from BJP and the other one from Congress. They were still, I think, you know, they were different in terms of ideologies, but still in harmony with respect to the overall environment. Uh, I would definitely say that political ideology speaks volumes about, uh, you know, the kind of economic support. Which you want, uh, you know, for the country, uh, the reason towards, you know, religion, uh, affiliations. Um, however, I think, you know, marriage is more about union of two souls as such. Uh, if you can still disagree with, uh, you know, some opinions, but however, having said that. At heart and mind, if you are the same people, if you can, uh, disagree still with respect, giving it to, uh, the one another. I think still, they can still continue to coexist in my observation, Joanne. Thank you. Back to you, Joanne.
Thank you so much, Amit. A big round of applause. But Amit, we started with such a heavy political question. Can they still be together? I hope, Amit, you, even though you have disagreements, you're happily married and, you know. You have a lovely wedded life. That's what I wish for you.
Thank you so much.
But all jokes apart, that was a very good take on a very medium difficult topic, I would say. One instruction to all my dear friends and the guests, please keep your hands raised. You have a virtual hand raise option. Keep it raised so that I can call you quickly. The more quick we are, the more people get to speak, right? Next, I would like to call up on the virtual stage, Saeda Anzari. Saeda Anzari, can I have your cameras on? Like, can I see you, your lovely face?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Joanne. Uh, uh, good evening, the Singhus Toastmaster.
Good evening, Saeda.
Yeah.
Would you like to go for something difficult?
Right. I'm with you, please, please.
Yeah, I can't see you on camera, but that's fine. You have a very lovely voice and I can hear you very clearly. So do you want an easy topic, a medium one or a difficult one? Wow.
Your choice. Are you still there?
Okay, my choice. Then I will definitely give you something really difficult.
Yeah. Okay. I'm a Toastmaster, by the way.
Then, then, then you deserve a difficult topic, no doubt about that. Toastmaster Saeda. Table stone, bridges burned, you live and learn. Table stone, bridges burned, you live and learn, Toastmaster Saeda.
Okay, thank you very much for a real difficult question, I should say, I mean, not an expression. Well, I think every step is a learning step. Just a few minutes back, I was with my district's, uh, ex-comp, you know, meeting. And I had invited my area directors, I'm the division director, but this year, by the way, District Seventy-Nine. And the out of four, only one, okay, turned up. Then the message I just put in my group was, was, thank you very much for being cooperative or non-cooperative. Every step is a learning step. And then I thank you for that. So yeah, whatever it is, every step is a learning step. It's not about whether you gain or lose, whether you, I mean, achieve what you want to achieve or you don't, right? When we start on a journey, like when we start, we make a commitment. We have some expectations, but that does not mean that everything is going to come up to our expectations. We need to move forward, we need to learn. There were times then, when I used to be upset by, because things didn't happen the way I expected them to be. Uh huh. So now I don't and that, that, that's the spirit of Toastmasters. We learn in Toastmasters. You may take up courses, you may take up sessions, but that will not help you as much as Toastmasters help. Yeah, I would like, okay, advise myself and others, those who are listening, that your achievement is what you learned. Every situation gives you an opportunity to learn and our achievement and our success is what we learn from it. Not analyze whether it came up to expectations or not, or came up to somebody else's expectation or not. No, it is what we learn. And thank you very much. Over to you, Joanne.
Thank you, Toastmaster Saeda. You spoke something from the heart, like I think this is something experienced by a lot of ex-comp all across the globe in Toastmasters. We all have had our days when we request for those role players and we request for our members and. Table stone, bridges burned, but yet we live and learn and move on to our next speaker, our next meeting. Thank you so much, Saeda, for sharing that story. That was very personal to all of us. Next, we have Waipavi Sundur. Am I pronouncing your name right?
Perfectly, Madam, table topic master.
Thank you, Waipavi. Are you a Toastmaster, Waipavi?
Yes, I am.
Difficult one? Easy? Difficult?
Yeah.
Yeah, I love the spirit tonight. I love this daring spirit. So ever for you, we'll do something a little different. This is known as a flip. Now, what is a flip? I'll give you a topic and you have to speak for that topic as well as against that topic. Within two minutes. Ready? So how do you do that? I give you the topic, you start speaking, I will say flip in between somewhere, anywhere. Just be mindful and be ready. The moment you hear the word flip, just change your stance. If you're starting with for, go for against. If you're starting with the against, then go for for and conclude within two minutes. Ready? All right, Toastmaster Waipavi. Flip title for you is, should animals be kept in zoo? Should animals be kept in zoo? Toastmaster Waipavi.
Ah, I'm the lion. I'm going to eat you. Almighty God has created me in such a way that I like flesh. See, I have cannons. I can tear you apart. I like the fresh blood, the meat. Horrifying, wasn't that? You heard only from one lion. Now imagine, you have such wild animals all around. And they will not come into your house saying, knock, knock, I'm Mr. Lion, I'm hungry, I want to eat you. So it's best advised that all the wild animals should be kept right in the zoo. But there's a twist. All the domestic animals will start having the party, the way Gabys is having party today. They'll just grow out in their population. I mean, imagine the earth, which has more of. Having said that, on the second thought, are we human beings now doing the same cruel thing? Maybe we're not. Maybe we're not wearing the clothes of lion, but don't we tear some of the animals like fishes, chicken and whatnot and eat? So we should also be kept in zoo. But are we in zoo? No. So certainly, all the wild animals, all the domestic animals should not be kept in zoo, but outside, but the safe option is that we should have a parliament for them, a supreme court for them. We should have a well legislation or a law binding society for them. Yes, it takes time. Another person just like Reverend Dr. B R Ambedkar has to take part again, how to set the rules. Well, but if we have come so far, why can't we go further? Yes, so bring out all the animals from the zoo. Save them from torture and let's train them, let's tame them. Table topic, Madam Table Topic Master, please agree with me and let's tomorrow only, let's all go to the zoo and unlock those animals. What say?
Wow, wow, big round of applause. That was so difficult, you know, to flip your mind and go for and against at the same time. You did a fantastic job, Waibhavi. Whether I agree with you or not, that's a secret I won't share. Only when I'm on, I am the speaker and maybe I'll talk about that. But fantastic job. See, dare tonight, guys, go for the difficult ones. It's fun. Next, who wants to come in? I want to call in next. Oh, I see Sorav Datta. Okay, DTM Sorav Datta. Are you up for it? Like, I can't see you on the camera, DTM Sorav Datta. I just see your v- virtual hand. Has DTM Sorav Datta stepped up? Okay, he's here. DTM Sorav Datta, difficult or difficult? Which one will you choose? Or difficult? You have three choices. You're on mute, sir.
Anything is fine, sorry.
Anything is fine.
Yeah, Joanne, I think before me, Shruti and Samita raised their hand. Do you want to do their first or I raised after Samita?
So I'll take Samita and Shruti after you because I have time till thirty-two. I'll try and manage to squeeze them both because I want them to speak. So DTM Sorav Datta. I have seen you speak so many serious topics, so I want to give you something nonsensical. Let's see how you do on that. Ready? So the topic is. Russia plans to train dolphins to become spies. Russia plans to train dolphins to become spies, Sorav Datta.
Yes, I heard that. And in fact, uh, those dolphins had reached out to me, uh, because they wanted to open fake LinkedIn profiles. Now, uh, as many of you know that, uh, I do trainings on how to create effective LinkedIn profiles. But the real challenge happened because they wanted fake LinkedIn profiles. So they said that, you know, we are a dolphin, but we want to appear like a whale. One dolphin came and said that I want to look like a tuna fish. But the cutest dolphin was the one who actually came and told me that I am a dolphin, but I would want to be a helicopter. I want a profile of a helicopter. And I kept on thinking, what exactly should I be doing? Now, the problem here is not with the dolphins wanting to create a LinkedIn profile, a fake LinkedIn profile. The problem is that why did Russia choose the dolphins? So what I did is I called up Putin and I do have him on his hotline. Uh, I know him, uh, and Putin also knows me. I mean, the reverse is more important. Like, many of us know Narendra Modi, but he doesn't know us, right? So I just, I wanted to be very clear. I know him and he knows me. And, uh, I called up Putin and, uh, I asked Putin that why did you choose, uh, uh, dolphins to become spies? So they said that because the dolphins have something which you clearly don't have, right? At least you are a good example of what they, what you don't have and they have. And I was like, what is that? It's that cuteness. You know, no one will ever suspect a dolphin to be a spy. On the other hand, if I have someone low rogue like you, the moment you walk into the room, people will know this guy means trouble. Right? And ask any of the Toastmasters in any of the districts in Toastmasters International and they would agree with you. The moment someone sees me in Toastmaster, they feel, you know, this guy means trouble, right? So that's why he selected the dolphins because they are so cute and no one can even imagine that they can do any harm. Anyways, I was not sold on the logic, but since the dolphins were paying me, so I decided to help them open the fake LinkedIn profiles and some of them actually managed to crack a few deals and uh, that's how things went, uh, good for them. And, uh, with this, I come to the end of this nonsense and thank you. Back to you, Joanne.
Thank you so much, DTM Sorav Datta. Like, I just tell you, table topics is like a mirror, you know, mirror, mirror on the wall. Tell me DTM's personality and it says it's serious. Even if I give him a nonsense topic, he will make up a story that sounds so serious as if really Putin has paid him money. Okay, I won't be wanting to be in your bag books, DTM. Last table topic speaker for my session, but don't worry, guys, there's another table topic session which is gonna come, so you all will have a lot of chance to speak. So I'd like to call upon Shruti Sharma on the virtual stage.
Thank you so much, Joanne. Thank you so much.
So much for being here. Are you a Toastmaster, Shruti?
Yes, I have recently joined.
Doesn't matter, Shruti, your smile is so lovely. I'm sure your energy, energy will be the same. Medium, difficult, easy, what do you want, Shruti?
Okay, difficult.
Difficult. I love women who dare to do things, you know? So Shruti, it's very simple. I'm going to give you a situation. You have to just speak for two minutes, whatever comes to your mind. Shruti. You open the door and there's a murder scene. What do you do? You open the door and there's a murder scene. What do you do, Shruti?
Thank you, Joanne. Uh, yesterday only, I opened my door. And guess what? There were five people. And there was this neighbor of mine, who was otherwise a very mean fellow, but God bless his soul. He was murdered in cold blood. I was thinking that what has he done? I mean, he was mean, we all knew, all the neighbors were pissed. But certainly, I mean, to get murdered, he must have done something really, really terrible. But then while I was wondering, there was a huge mob who just came to our apartments and this, they just raided almost his entire house. What we found inside his house while they were raiding the house, they were not interested in the cash and everything. They just opened his wardrobe. They just digged under the and they found some big packets of heroin. They were wildly searching and searching and searching. And while they were searching, there came up diamond packets. Heroin, diamond packet. And while they were in the middle of this, one of my neighbors called up the police. And this mob was already here and we had another mob. I mean, it was not mob, it was a group of policemen. And in just split seconds, there were gunshots, there was, there was sirens, there was so much of chaos. That we guys were terrified to the core. Just then, I had a strange sound, nagging sound on top of my head. And guess what? I opened my eyes and it was my mom with a cup of tea and she was waking me up to get ready for the college. And yeah, I just got to realize that I was dreaming. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Shruti. I was, I was thinking to myself, she needs to give a disclaimer that this is fictional. All characters that I'm talking about are fictional. Thank God you ended it with a dream. Probably some South Indian movie that you were watching, Shruti Sharma, that was in your dream, I can tell you. Classic Bollywood and South Indian Masala films story, but very nice attempt. I loved it. You guys have been a fantastic, fantastic, uh, uh, what do you say, audience tonight. I wish I had more time, but we have another session of table topics now, which I have been told is even more special by someone even more special. So thank you so much and back to you, T M O D. Thank you for this opportunity to be the table topic master tonight. Over to you, T M O D, Manvi.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Joan. It was indeed crazy, happy, easy, difficult and medium table topic session. With this, I would like to call up on stage the second table topic master. Who actually represented not only Gabby's, but the whole area in division contest, that too in table topics contest. Toastmaster Aparna Raja is a passionate speaker, a hippie at heart, a mom at home and an entrepreneur by choice. Let's witness the table topic session from the expert herself, Toastmaster Aparna. The stage is all yours.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Manvi Kumar, for that warm, warm, warm welcome. But I must say, I'm not the only expert here. I'm just like everyone else. In fact, Toastmaster Joan, what a fabulous session. So after that session, well, I have to pull up my socks and present a nice one, something at least at par with what she just did. And I'm gonna attempt that. That's all. That said, we were gonna have a fun session. Now, it's not gonna be very serious at all because this is our celebratory meeting. And I'm gonna give you all a choice, just like what Toastmaster Joan did. But this is slightly different. You get to choose the kind of topic you want to attempt. Before that, let me lay down the rules for anyone who's probably joined now or someone who tends to forget the timing guidelines. Well, Toastmasters, you're gonna have about one to two minutes to attempt the table topics. One minute, our timer will show you, which is Toastmaster, Toastmaster Chitrapshi, which, are you with us? Yeah. She will, she will show you the green card. At one and a half minutes, you will be shown the yellow card. And at two minutes, you will be shown the red card, which means it's time to close shop. Right? With that, I'm gonna give you all two kinds of topics. One is the turntable and the other one is called what happens next? In the turntable, you're gonna have a topic and then there would be a big but there, like but. And then you take it from there. And on the what happens next, quite self-explanatory, you will have a small storyline. And then you have to tell us what happens after that. Now, it can't be that simple. Well, just to add to the twist, I will also be sharing three words on the chat box for you all to use when you'll attempt this. Now, don't get scared. These are very simple words and you can easily incorporate them in your answers. So with that, who is our first brave heart? May I see? Raise of hands, please. Oh, there we go. Toastmaster Waibhavi Sundur. Anyone else? I, I'm just asking because you've attended the previous session. Anyone else? What about Toastmaster Ayana Rodriks? I see Toastmaster Ayana Rodriks. Are you up for a question? Okay, we have Toastmaster Mahmud Ismail. Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Toastmaster Shruti, I will come back to you. I'm just giving the first timers the first opportunity.
Yes, I am.
Master Ay, Ayana Aswath, is it okay if I come to you next because I've called upon Toastmaster Mahmud already? Is that okay, Toastmaster Ayana? Okay, great. Thank you. I have a thumbs up. So what is it gonna be today for you? A turntable or a what happens next?
Uh, a turntable.
A turntable it is. Very nice. So I will first be dropping the three words, which I would, you know, you can try and put in your answers when you're attempting the topic.
I'm sorry. I meant, I meant the second motion.
What happened? No worries, no worries. What happens next it is. Okay, so your three words in the chat box. The three words are color, road, smile. Quite easy, right? And the topic for you, Toastmaster Mahmud. OMG, oh my God, I just got a call from take it over.
That was actually the perfect line according to the story I wanted to share. Thanks a lot, Table Topic Master, my fellow Toastmaster from India. Uh, good evening or good morning or good afternoon from Bahrain. So, oh my God, I just had a call from Mr. Faad. What happened before, what happened on and what happened next? This will be my table topics answer. First of all, I was just a recent graduate and I, from my first job interview, I got hired. I was very proud. And they asked me, can you do this task? Uh, for the sake of confidentiality, I don't want to share what is that task or what I was actually doing. But I was given a task and it was totally important and I had a phone call from Mr. Faad. Oh my God, this is the first time I answer a phone call. Hello, how can I help you? Yeah, we heard that you are very good at this agency that you do this task. How long will it take you to finish it? And I said, as soon as possible. For your information, as soon as possible for me. I didn't know what does that mean actually. Soon after one or two days, my colleagues came to help me. Are you good with that? And I proudly said, yes, in my head, no idea. By the third day, I was totally tempered, I was totally shaking, crumbling. I'll work. I was actually just looking as if I'm working, but I wasn't doing anything. By the time, this is the third day, oh my God, I got a phone call. Mr. Faad is so upset. I didn't answer him. Second time, I didn't do that. The third time, my colleagues answered the phone call and they handed over to me. How soon will it be ready? As soon as possible, I'll call you back. Now, to my surprise, Mr. Faad, about seven foot tall, he was very tall. I don't know how long he was. He was in front of me, who was totally upset about the service that I have provided. I didn't do anything actually. And he told me with a very calm voice, you are ashamed over here. By the time he was actually shouting and shouting, the owner of the agency heard the conversation. And he wanted to cool him down. He called him over, he sat down with him and he said, what can we do for you? I'm sorry about what happened with our colleague not helping you, but this is not our kind of agency. He refunded him back and then he said, Mahmud, could you please come? Now, looking at the color from Mr. Faad, I know this was the tough road. And I had to actually put a smile, but I couldn't do that. Unfortunately, it was totally embarrassing. However, I learned my lesson from my boss. Mr. M, for the sake of confidentiality, said, if you didn't know how to do this task, you should have asked for help. What is totally wrong with you saying, I don't know, three words? Ladies and gentlemen, your anniversary, I say, it's just about taking the courage to say, I don't know, but not with these three words. But we're saying, can you please show me? Over to you. Sorry for taking long.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Mahmud, for giving us those very, very important, pertinent, um, I think, words because ask, saying, I don't know, is a big problem for a lot of us. Thank you very much. Thanks. That said, let's move on to our next speaker. Who is it gonna be? Toastmaster Joan, do you wanna go? We have Toastmaster Ayana with us. I don't see her. So Toastmaster Joan, Toastmaster Samita, Waibhavi, I'm just asking people who are on camera.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go if nobody else is, uh.
Okay, Toastmaster Joan. To you, the next question. Is it a turntable or a what happens next for you?
Whichever you choose. I'll go with your choice.
Okay, very nice. So okay. The three words for you are fish, play and dance. Fish, play and dance. I'm actually putting it on the chat, so you can keep the chat open to be able to see them. I will also be dropping the question there. And the question for you is, or rather the topic. I woke up and it was the year twenty-one, twenty-three. I woke up and it was the year twenty-one, twenty-three. Over to you.
And the first thing I did was said a prayer of thank you. Because God, I've been living for more than hundred years. I mean, I'm in my thirties right now and in twenty-one, twenty-three, I'm still alive. Of course, I know that medical science has already, you know, found all the answers for longevity. Of course, I know that medical science has already, you know, found all the answers for longevity and immortality and I know we, like Aparna is also there with me on twenty one, twenty three. I can see Nancy. Nancy is living next to me in twenty one, twenty three. So it's not a big surprise, honestly. But still, like a very good Christian girl that I am, I said, thank you. And you know what I did? The first thing, I went out and had my breakfast. Now in twenty one, twenty three, my dear friends, you may think that we had an apocalypse, but no. We are living in actually a utopian society where everyone on earth is very happy. I don't know why, maybe just because we all are immortals now and the breakfast that I had was a fish. Specifically, a Kerala style pepper fried fish. Yeah, pepper is not available now in twenty one, twenty three and the fish is not a real fish. It's scientifically made in a laboratory, but doesn't matter. It tastes like a pepper fried Kerala style fish. So I'm enjoying my breakfast in a pepper fried Kerala style fish, an artificial one. And then I'm thinking what to do now. It's been like centuries and I'm living, there's nothing, no purpose to life, right? So I just go out and like all these women who are more than two hundred years like me, we all get down, you know, to gossip in that area because gossip is still alive in twenty one, twenty three, my dear friends. Women have not forgotten and for your kind information, men are also gossiping because none of us have anything else to do left. We are just living without purpose. So we get into our group of gossip and we are playing our scrabble and trying to invent new words because life has no more meaning. So we are like, let's invent a new language, let's invent a new word. And in between I see there, the Gabby's Toastmaster meeting is happening. Yeah, in twenty one, twenty three, the Gabby's Toastmaster meeting is happening and now Gabby's is the world's number one. Apparently, I don't know why, but it is. And there I can see that they are all dancing a Ringa Ringa Roses, something is happening and Aparna is hosting that meeting. But I'm refraining from that because in twenty one, twenty three, I say to myself, enough of Toastmasters. Leave me alone. Let me be at peace and just gossip and have fun. That was joke. I'm still a Toastmaster in twenty one, twenty three. Back to you Aparna Raja. Thank you.
Wow, I am speechless and I'm even happier that you took us along with you on that journey. Never expected that take. I think expect the unexpected from Joan. Wonderful, wonderful attempt. So let's move on. Uh, the next speaker, Toastmaster Samita, huh? Toastmaster, would you like to take this? Would that be a turntable or a what happens next for you?
What happens next?
A what happens next it is? Okay. So let me give you this. The three words for you are tail, fly and cloud. Tail, fly and cloud. It's on the chat box and the question is, or the topic is, I had to escape. It was my last chance. I had to escape. It was my last chance. Over to you, Toastmaster Samita.
Thank you, Table Topic Master. I had to escape. This was my last chance. Where was I sitting? It's a deep in the mountains, surrounded by forest. What was I doing there? I had found that diamond which everyone was after and I was hiding here. But you know what? They got a hint of it and I could see that they were coming. They had disguised themselves very well. One, in a form of a wild animal, claws and tail. The other one was pretending to be a weird bird. It was not able to fly. I could make it out. They were all fake people. But how am I to escape? And that is when I found the river going by. Slowly tiptoeing down that steep mountain. I came near the river. Now, what to do? Should I jump? Should I look for some boat or someone to help me out? No one is there in that deserted area. So guess what? I thought, let me wait for the cloud cover to run away beneath those foggy clouds where no one could find me out and take a new route to my freedom. Holding my precious diamonds hidden in my waist pocket. I slowly started moving, but guess what? This time, there were some real animals after me and believe me, when I started running for my dear life, no one could stop me. I ran and ran till I went to a space painting, but I knew that I could leave those wild animals behind. And I have those diamonds still now. Over to you, Top, Table Topic Master.
Thank you, Toastmaster Samita. You're one hell of a storyteller, aren't you? What a pleasure it is to hear you speak. Thank you. So we, we're going to the last table topic speaker. Toastmaster Shruti, you have your hands raised and I don't have the heart to not give you a topic. So here's a topic for you and I would say by far my favorite today. So the three words for you are sharp, trick and black. I'm putting it on the chat box. Sharp, trick, black. Okay, uh, so I didn't ask you for a choice. Is it okay if I go with this topic? It's a what happens next?
Perfect.
Great, great. So sharp, trick, black. And the topic is, the power went off and there was a knock on the door. The power went off and there was a knock on the door. Over to you, Toastmaster Shruti.
Okay, thank you, Toastmaster Aparna. So, uh, the power went off. It was pitch dark outside. All the lights were off. We could not hear or see anybody and there was a sudden knocking. Rather, I, it would be an understatement if we call it knocking. It was thumping, followed by a sharp and a shrill voice coming from somewhere far behind. Constant thumping. I tried to peep through the peephole. I could see nothing. I tried again and I saw those monstrous eyes. I was shit scared. I was dead scared. I wanted to hide somewhere. But then something came up and it was, I was like frozen for a while. It was as if some magician has tricked me. It froze me. And there was a complete blackout. All of a sudden, one of my daughters came running behind me. I was, suddenly I came back to life because motherly instinct actually takes you out from the far dark place wherever you are because this, this uh, savior instinct obviously takes you over. So I wanted to save my children. I wanted to save my family. No matter how scary and how black and how dark things were, I tried to find some way to hide and to safeguard my children. And there was this monster lurking just outside my door and the thumping had suddenly stopped. I tried to work out something. And then when nothing comes to your rescue, the only resort that you have is God. I went to that small little temple that I have at my place. I chanted a few mantras. Hanumanji is our favorite go-to god when we are under such kind of spell. So I recited that Hanman Chalisa two, three times and suddenly the powers restored and things are all okay and I thank God for that. Thank you so much.
You know, I did expect a scary story, but that was quite scary even for me. Thank you very much, Toastmaster Shruti. And I'm glad your motherly instincts and God gave you rescue. Thank you very much. With that, we've come to the end of the second part of the table topic segment. I hope you all enjoyed it as much as I did. With that, thank you very much and back to you, Toastmaster of the day, Toastmaster Manvi. Over to you.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Aparna. Can we have, give a huge round of applause for Toastmaster Aparna. Thank you so much for turning the tables and giving few tricky words on which people have to speak. That was something new for me too. Now, move, before move, giving the stage back to the president, I want all of you to use your chat box and answer in just one word. What is that one thing that you love about Gabby the most? Guys, I'm waiting for the replies. Challenging. When I asked excellence, when I asked the same question from few of the members, the answers I got were excellence, family vibes, friendliness, mentoring and a new answer that I can see in the chat box is table topics, the TT. That is what makes the Gabbys united and with a motto, we leave no member behind. Gabby's is all set to serve the members, serve the guests and serve the whole community of Toastmasters International in whole. Now I will give the stage to the president, but do you think it is over? It is not. We have two more days. I'll request everyone to please be there tomorrow and on Sunday as well. We have some exciting line of fun-filled activities and would love to have your presence in next few days. With this, I would, I sign off at thirty AM O D of the meeting and give the stage to the president. Distinguished Toastmaster Nancy, the stage is all yours.
Thank you, Toastmaster Manvi. Before I move on to the announcements, let me ask you this one question. Was it amazing or was it amazing during the entire meeting? What do you guys think?
Amazing, amazing.
Yes, see, I'm so surprised by the answers. Thank you. Thank you so much. We had DTM Nagish as the panel moderator. We had Toastmaster Manvi as T mod. Toastmaster Joan, Toastmaster Aparna Raja as table topic masters. Toastmaster Chitrapshi as, uh, as the timer and Toastmaster Chaitanya supporting her as a timer during the second part of the meeting. We also had newsletter launch, website launch by DTM Sorrow and division director address along with SA and P U addresses. Maybe have a huge round of applause for all these meeting rule takers made this meeting happening. Beautiful, wonderful, amazing, whatever adjectives you want to use today. Thank you. Thank you so much. Before we sign off from today's meeting, I would like to make an announcement that this is not a one-day celebration. If you're already wowed with what you saw today, what you learned today, how much fun you had today, wait for tomorrow and day after. Tomorrow, what do we have in store? Tomorrow, we have an educational speech by Colonel Sehbi Judge. He is an army veteran, somebody who has been into army and outside army. Lot of experience and who is going to talk to us about communication. How it's a survival skill and who can be a better speaker than him to vouch for it? Let's learn from him tomorrow. And the second thing that we have in store for tomorrow is a panel discussion. Toastmasters at work. This panel discussion would be led by DTM Sarav Tata. We have esteemed panelists who are working in different professions. One is a cancer specialist, one is a lawyer, one is SVP of data analytics and one is a principal, what has been a principal for thirty years. So much of experience on the table for tomorrow. So before you sign off, ensure that you are joining us tomorrow at ten AM. And last but not the least, let's go a little back and enjoy our childhood days. And with all those childhood activities, we are coming in hybrid mode on Sunday at ten AM. It's gonna be a lot and lot and lot of fun, I promise you. So if you are not in Bangalore yet, ensure that you book your flight tickets or train tickets or whatever mode of transportation you want to use and join us on ten, on tenth at ten AM to celebrate with a birthday cake, the three-year-old the Gabbys. Now I call this meeting to adjourn. With this, I wish you all a very great evening. See you all tomorrow at ten AM.